...for February the 22nd, 2016. We have a busy agenda today. We have a call order and then five, we've got a Board of Health discussion with South Coast Neighbors. That would be you folks. And then we have a consent agenda and we have to conduct business action relative to approve Chapter 90, final reports for South Main Street, Rebecca Road, Dunham Road, Melbourne Road is submitted by the Highway Inspector, and sun agreement at Lakeville Animal Shelter, approved senior work program participants, approve the abatements for the month of 2016 as submitted by Chief Sylvia, approve, sign the annual Patriots triathlon from Sun Multi-Sport events for June 18th, and 2016 Route 105 and Route 18 also approved donations from Sun Multi-Sport to the town. Approve, sign the 15th Annual Cranberry Tri-Fest for August 20th, 21st, and 2016, these are road races through the town, and approve and sign, approve the Tour de Creme. This is a new race through the town, May 22nd, 2016, and discuss the building committee. Right off the bat, I'd like to welcome the members of the South Coast Neighbors United. And I'm going to give you a second to do your presentation, but I've done a little research myself. I just want to take a minute to see what you folks know about what else is going on in Account Block this. Is that okay with you? How many here are familiar with Port Ambrose, New York? None of you? Okay. I'm going to share this with you. Last month, there was a proposed LNG terminal hook up there. It's on the tip of Long Island, and it was at the other end of it, nine miles away out to sea, was an LNG float that was being proposed to be built there with these pipelines running into Port Ambrose, New York. The governor vetoed that.
Shut it down.
I'm not going to let him do it. My point here is the governor vetoed it. Okay? Secondly, who knows in this group what's going on February the 26th, 2015? Ring a bell with anybody?
Is that the meeting regarding the DPU?
Bingo. If you have a public meeting on February the 26th, 2016, at 2:00 PM with the Department of Public Utilities, that's a place for you to voice your concerns, which will get back to the governor.
We're going. We have no.
Okay. He's the one, that's where the bucket's going to stop, because he has the ability to veto. I appreciate what you're doing here, but we can't do anything. So please start your presentation. I wanted to make sure you're aware of what went on in Port Ambrose and this meeting that's so important to you. That's the one that the governor's probably going to make his decision on whether he vetoes this or not.
I'm speaking for the group, Mr. Chairman. Where would you like me here? Is this okay?
Wherever you're comfortable, sir. If you just announce yourself to the camera who you are.
I don't know if this is uncomfortable for you, but it works for the group and it helps me see the TV screens.
Let me ask you this. How many people here are Free Town residents? Oh! Do you vote?
Yeah.
My last term, I'm done the 6th of April.
So pretty good, pretty good Free Town turnout. That's a good, that's a good one. My name is Roger Kral. I'm the Treasurer of South Coast Neighbors United. Dana Sargent's the President of the group. 54-year South Coast resident, 22 years in the same house in the town of Acushnet. And I planned on speaking for 15, 20 minutes. I'll do the best I can to limit it to 15. Wendy's in charge of keeping me on track. South Coast Neighbors United is a steering committee for a group. We're 12 individuals that represent six cities and towns. We've partnered with the Toxic Action Center in Boston, Hands Across the River Coalition in New Bedford, the Coalition for Responsible Siting of LNG Facilities in Fall River, and the Coalition for Social Justice in Fall River to oppose the LNG project that's being proposed locally, which is going to affect both Free Town and the town of Acushnet. We're here to tell you why we're opposed to the project today. Again, just to introduce myself briefly. Again, I've lived in this area all my life, New Bedford, Dartmouth, and Acushnet. I'm not just a complainer, I'm an active volunteer. I was a 12-year member of the Finance Committee in Acushnet. I was four years as the Chairman, two-term President, PTO. I was on our school building committee. It took us eight years to build our schools in town. I'm a 19-year Rotarian, Treasurer of Fall River Chamber of Commerce. All of that's volunteer. I don't just complain, I get back.
I know what that's like.
I'm sure you do. I'm here to complain today. Not to you. I wear all kinds of hats. 120 days ago, I don't think I knew what LNG was, and I've learned a lot about it. I'm going to talk about the project that's proposed. I'm going to talk about how it affects the town of Acushnet and the town of East Free Town. So I'm going to do all of that. First of all, what is the Access Northeast project locally and how it affects us? It's EverSource Energy Partners, which is EverSource, is a name we know, Spectra Energy and National Grid. They're proposing to extend a pipeline through Free Town to two new tanks which will be constructed in the town of Acushnet. The projects are mutually dependent. You can't have the tanks without the pipes. The pipes are unnecessary without the tanks. So East Free Town is important in this as we are, as Acushnet is as well, to them. And what this project is going to do is it's going to bring more natural gas into the area from Pennsylvania. So that's the big concept. They're saying we need more gas in this area, and that's what this project's about. In Acushnet, we're arguing it's the wrong spot for these tanks. I'm going to talk about the tanks. But the project is proposed in a residential area. Property is zoned residential. National Plan says we want to keep it residential, surrounded by homes, surrounded by schools, within a mile of two major school facilities in Acushnet and in New Bedford. A hospital facility, the old Parkwood Hospital, a nursing home right on Acushnet Avenue, a daycare facility, all very, very close to this proposed facility. And what they're going to do is they're going to clear 200 acres of a 250-acre site, 200 acres, wooded acres, probably always been wooded. Always been wooded since I've lived in that area, and you can't replace 200 wooded acres. 40% wetlands, they've acknowledged they're going to build on the wetlands, but 40% of the site, my estimation, looking at the map, about 40% wetlands. And again, surrounded by homes and schools. And what this is, it's an LNG production facility. And they're saying that what they're doing on the site is very similar to what's there already, but it's not similar to what's there already. This is an LNG production facility. What they've got on site now is an LNG storage facility. They bring it in as LNG.
Which is up on the monitor.
They store it, that's okay, and this is a great picture. That's what's there presently, and why don't you switch to what's proposed? So you can see, they're saying, well, we're already there. That's what's there, that's what's proposed. Look at the scale. All the buildings on the left are going to be in the wetlands. So what they're going to be doing on that facility is turning natural gas into LNG, basically freezing it to 260 degrees Fahrenheit below zero, making it a liquid, putting it in the tanks, and then when they need it to support the energy needs in New England, they're going to turn it back into a gas, shoot it back up through Free Town, and back into the Algonquin Pipeline. So what we've got now comes in as LNG and goes out as gas. So it's a single process. And what they're going to do is they're going to be converting it back and forth from gas to LNG, much more complicated. If you can look at, again, the existing facilities, go back, what's there now versus what's proposed. Look at the number of structures, all on the left-hand side. That gives you some sense of the complexity of what they're doing proposed versus the future. Now, you look at this, it's a nice wooded area, right? Nobody lives there. This is a great forest, middle of nowhere. But when you go to the aerial shot that we've got, which is a few pictures down, you can see that this is really a substantially residential area, surrounded by homes. On the north side is Free Town. On the west side would be New Bedford and Acushnet on the other two sides. The facility that's proposed is 13 times bigger than what's there. They're going to build 6.5 billion cubic feet, 13 times bigger than what's there. What does that mean? What can I compare that to you with? This is the property in Boston, you're familiar with it, you drive up the Southeast Expressway. They're going to have six times more storage capacity than that. Everett, which is a major, major LNG, U.S. LNG import facility in Everett, LNG comes in on ships up through Boston to this facility, major, major facility. We're twice the size of that, proposed in the town of Acushnet, surrounded by homes and hospitals and families and children. Bigger than what was proposed at Weaver's Cove. You remember what was proposed in Fall River, Weaver's Cove? That was 4.3 billion cubic feet. This is 6.5 proposed in the town of Acushnet. So bigger than what was proposed in Fall River. I'm going to compare this to give you one more comparison, Gillette Stadium. We can look at Gillette Stadium. Gillette Stadium is 16 stories high. The proposed tanks will be 17 stories high. Gillette Stadium uses 35 acres. They will clear 200 acres for the proposed project they're going to do in the town of Acushnet. Each tank, each of two tanks will be 90 yards across. That's 100 yards football, excuse me, 90 yards. So let's drop, there's going to be two of those. Let's drop that into Gillette Stadium. 90 yards across, that's not to scale. We've done the best we can. Wendy did that. Not to scale, it's pretty close.
It's actually not as wide. It's actually wider than that.
It's wider than that, but not as tall. But give you some sense, 90 yards across, 17 stories high, they're going to put two Gillette stadiums in the town of Acushnet and put gas in. Presently, in New England, there's 20 billion cubic feet of LNG storage capacity, 20 billion cubic feet. They're going to add 6.8 billion cubic feet in the town of Acushnet. So 25% of New England's LNG storage capacity is going to be in the town of Acushnet. The rest of it, the other 75%, will be split across 32 facilities. So 25% in the town of Acushnet, the rest of it across 32 facilities. We're going to have a lot of LNG in Acushnet, and you wonder why all of that's necessary. So the other 32, on average, 2.5 billion cubic feet. We've got 6.5 billion cubic feet in the town of Acushnet. Why should Free Town care about this project? Well, you can't really, as I said earlier, you can't separate Free Town and Acushnet. Without the gas lines, the tanks don't make sense. Without the tanks, the gas lines, the lines aren't needed. Acushnet's going to get the tanks, and Acushnet's going to get, they're saying, and this needs to be confirmed certainly, $10 million plus in annual tax revenue. Free Town gets the gas lines and the gas lines. You get the gas lines. But the projects, again, are interrelated. So the gas lines are going to be 24 inches round. So you think about a gas line that comes into a house as what, like that, probably? The gas lines are 24 inches around. They're going to be buried maybe three feet down, and they're going to run them through, well, we don't, the line seems to keep moving, but through people's yards, through roads, they're going to run it wherever they can run it to get to the Acushnet tanks. And they're still working on that. And just point of clarity, we were accused of presenting that. That will be buried. Those lines aren't above ground. Point of clarification, those will be buried, but they'll be buried three feet down. And, you know, where they're buried, you lose the right to the ground above them. So they take a 50-foot wide easement, and as a property owner, you use the loss of the property above it. You can't plant trees. You know, they basically control that property. It's still yours, you're still taxed on it, you still pay insurance on it, but they control the property. What's the danger of gas lines? I want to talk about it a little bit. I went to Wikipedia for that. But, you know, please Google gas line risk, gas line explosions. Look at some pictures, we've got some. But here's 20 pages of a list of pipeline accidents in the United States in the 21st century. So this is since 2000. This is 20 pages in fine print. This isn't all gas, but, you know, gas is a piece of it. It is a pipeline. Pipeline's a man-made, no matter what you're running through it, there's risks. So some of this is, but let me give you some gas statistics. I'm going to leave a lot of this stuff behind. 20 pages of fine print since 2000, 21st century gas line incidents. But let me just read a couple of things. From 1994 to 2013, the U.S. had 745 serious incidents with gas distribution, causing 278 fatalities and 1,100 injuries, I'm rounding, with $111 million in property damage. You know, more statistics on gas transmission, more statistics on all gas types. A recent Wall Street Journal review found that there were 1,400 pipeline spills and accidents in the U.S. 2010 to 2013. According to the Journal, four in every five pipeline accidents are discovered by local residents, not the companies that own the pipeline. So once you've got the pipeline running through your property, apparently, you've got to watch to make sure it's not a problem either. And there are, you know, multiple pictures of pipeline incidents. So, I mean, they're going to tell us, and certainly will tell us, that pipelines are safe and they don't blow up every day, but when they do, it's a problem.
More than one a week nationwide. That's the average, according to the U.S. Department of Transportation, more than one a week.
And we can, I'm going to leave you with this stuff. We can certainly send you this as well. And Wendy, who lives in Free Town, did all the graphics, and as a member of our group, did the graphics for us. So, you know, when we think about this, we think about the property owner of impact. Who wants to live near an LNG facility? Who's going to go to their Realtor and say, you know, geez, Acushnet's a desirable community. How close can you get me to those tanks? Who's going to buy a property with a tag on the front lawn that says, you know, there's a gas pipeline, 24-inch gas pipeline, three feet down, running through the property? You know, they're going to say, well, it has to be somewhere because we need it. You know, but I guess I'd ask everyone, you know, do we really need it that bad? And I'm going to talk about that. And would I want it in my backyard? You know, everybody seems to say, well, we need it, it's fine. Would I want it in my backyard? This project, all of this gas, and there's gas, gas everywhere when this project happens, is about 0 to 45 days in the winter. Where am I on time, Wendy? Just curious.
It was an alibi, couple more minutes.
10 minutes. Okay, I'm good. This is all being done for 0 to 45 winter days when homeowners who use gas to heat their homes are competing with electric generators who use gas to generate electricity. So on a very cold winter, everybody wants that same gas. In the summer, when electric use is actually highest, it's not a problem. It's a problem in the winter when we're heating our homes and electric generators need electricity as well. So what they're doing is for that 0 to 45-day problem, and this winter's probably closer to zero, if you look at the weather, closer to zero, they're building a 365-day pipeline, a 360-day storage facility for gas that may or may not be needed most years. And even if it is, it's a 45-day problem at most. It's like putting an addition on your house because you have a big family that may visit for the holidays. We're going to put an addition on the house rather than, geez, maybe we should go out to a restaurant and have dinner for Thanksgiving. There's another way to solve the problem besides a 365-day pipe and a tank. In Boston Harbor, we talked about the LNG, I forgot where it was, what New York just shot down. In Massachusetts, 10 years ago, 2008, they built two similar facilities to solve this exact same problem. They spent $750 million, and those facilities, for the last eight years, have sat largely unused because gas is cheaper. In the United States, we're about to become the world's third-largest producer of natural gas. So the thing, it's cheaper to use the U.S. gas than it is to bring gas in for the 0 to 45-day problem, but there's more. Wait, there's more. We've got three studies for that reason that say this project's unnecessary. I'm going to leave those with you. One of them is our Attorney General, Maura Healey, looking at the options to solve this problem, saying, we don't need 365-day pipelines, we don't need 365-day storage for a 0 to 45-day project. State Senate President Stan Rosenberg said, "The Kinder Morgan Project," which is a project competing with this one, flies in the face of Massachusetts' clean energy goals. In Massachusetts, we've got a plan for our energy future. It involves solar, involves oil, it involves gas, it involves wind energy, it involves oil, but it doesn't involve pipeline, pipeline everywhere, which seems to be the plan. Moving on. So why are they doing it? Article from, I hope I printed it and brought it. I definitely printed it and brought it. The bigger scheme of things, the bigger plan seems to be that there, all this natural gas is intended to be exported, that because the United States is all of a sudden generating all of this gas, they're fracking gas, that the plan is to build all of these pipelines and export all this gas. And that's Senator Markey, this is brand-new, hot off the press. We were saying it, and then he, you know, sort of supported what we were saying. Gas pipeline firms want to use New England as a thorough way for international export. So what Spectra Energy's doing is they've got a pipeline currently coming down that's been supplying gas to our area. They're reversing the flow of the gas, and all of the gas, domestic gas, is going to be exported. So Acushnet residents, Free Town residents are paying the price for all this gas infrastructure that has nothing to do with the energy needs of New England. Another report, Senator Markey, and I'm going to leave this with you. America Pays the Gas Leaks. Looking at gas, existing gas infrastructure in Massachusetts, there are 20,000 identified gas leaks in Massachusetts that the energy companies, that the EverSources, that the national grids are not repairing. And they're not repairing because until they become critical, dangerous, they don't repair them. So we run a pipeline through your yard, it's going to leak gas, but until that gas leak reaches a sense of urgency, reaches, well, the day before your house blows up, they may come and fix it. Talks about, and this is from his paper, which again, I'm going to leave with you, talks about 640, in a 10-year period, 640 million to $1.5 billion in gas. We're paying for the gas. Once they put it in the pipe, we pay for it, whether it makes our house or not. So they build it into the rate. 99 billion cubic feet of natural gas lost and unaccounted for. Terrorist target. This will be, and I don't know if I said it or not, this will be, as best we can determine, and EverSource hasn't argued with it, among the largest LNG storage facilities on the east coast of the United States, in the town of Acushnet. The largest LNG storage facility, bigger than Boston, bigger than Everett. Everett's huge, bigger than all of that. We see that as, and Homeland Security, Department of Homeland Security, has identified these sites as being terrorist targets. It seemed to be a very soft terrorist target, because as best we can determine, if there's any problem at that facility, their security plan, they're going to light it all up, they're going to put a fence around it, barbed wire on the fence, there'll be a gate, but as best we can determine, if there's a problem at the site, they're going to dial 911 and wait for the police to respond, or the fire department to respond. So that seems to be the security plan. Health issues, topic for another day. I could spend another, and we could spend another half hour plus talking about health issues. So what can we do? What can you do to help? I know you said you're, you know, maybe we should be calling the governor, and we have. We've written to our governor, our senators, but you've got the ability to refuse access to public land. You can tell them, no, you cannot survey public land. Your Conservation Commission has a lot of power. The other, we have the slide with the Free Town residents, the table 3.1, Wendy, is that coming up? So this is, finally, defer, Access Northeast. This is your residents doing a good job. So you look at all the places they're going, they're saying, this is what we've got for approvals to survey the land we need to run our pipeline through. So you look at other communities and what they've got for approvals. Look at the town, the Acushnet 24-inch connector, they've got 34% survey approval, and that 34% survey approval is the people of East Free Town telling them, no, you can't come onto my property to survey. They may be able to force it one day, but the residents in your town are saying, we don't want this. And with our help, with the help of our group, they're signing letters that's saying, you can't come onto my property and survey my land. And that was in their report to FERC.
Okay, you got to start wrapping this up.
I am going to wrap this up. I'm on my last page, and I've been talking fast. It doesn't get much faster than this one. Okay. So any residents that could refuse the survey, we encourage you to refuse the survey. You can sign up for email notifications. We've got a website, we've got a Facebook page. Sign up for that. You know, and Free Town Board of Selectmen, I mean, it would be helpful if you, you know, evaluate this and tell them, we don't want this in our town. We don't, you've got the authority to do that. I mean, you could choose to, you can choose to say that, you know, it's up to the governor, but it's up to all of us. I mean, it's, you know, people look at me and say, Roger, what can you do?
You've already said no.
We've already said no.
Well, thank you.
That was about three months, two months ago.
Okay, thank you.
This board clearly stated twice that we would not allow them to survey the land. So we took a stand.
We appreciate that.
I remember you saying, the land that they wanted to survey, not the public land, not the public.
No, we clearly took a vote saying that we would not allow them to survey the land in Free Town.
The land that the town owns.
Okay.
We appreciate that, and that's the first step of this. But going forward, we just want to know, as residents of this community and this board, that we've got the town and the council of the town on our sides, because in the past, there have been successful rallies against natural gas pipelines and facilities in certain areas, because the towns came together, formed coalitions, 10, 11-town coalitions. Didn't cost them anything, just signed papers, yep, we're against this. And that got submitted to the governor in the past, and that's what shut it down. That's what we're asking. We're asking to have the town back us.
Not accusing anybody of any, I didn't know what action you'd taken.
You've already told them they can't survey our land.
Thank you.
But going forward.
I mean, that speaks for where we are in the project.
As a town, we want to know that we're one unit against.
But you do have a lot, you do have a lot of power in this. You do.
This information that I gleaned about this upcoming meeting.
Yeah, we'll be there.
One thing made me crazy about it. Naturally, they want to stuff a pipeline down your throat, but they're committing, they're petitioning for tariffs.
Yeah, we're going to pay for it.
To make you pay for it.
We're going to pay for it.
Get me a wake glass.
Can I give you one more story? That's, so they've got to prove that they've got customers for the punch. 90 seconds. I don't need that one.
90 seconds, and I'm going to throw a microphone.
All right. So part of what they're doing with the DPU is to justify this project, they've got to prove that they've got customers for the gas. So that we're going to pay for it through our rates, they've got to justify that they've got customers for our gas, for the gas. We're going to build it because we've got customers for it. The DPU hearing, they're going to make themselves their own customers for the gas. So they're going to buy their own gas from themselves that we pay for.
They've contracted to purchase it, to prove that they have the customers.
From themselves.
To prove the need.
That would make an interesting meeting of it.
Yes, it will.
So we'll be there, it should be fun.
The process of this is actually already being appealed by the Conservation Law Foundation. But they're jumping ahead to try to beat them to it.
You bet, sir. I want to thank you for your presentation. It was very well done.
Thank you.
I live on 87 Dr. Greeley Road. Mrs. Sadik lives, I shouldn't say that, but you're throwing rocks at my house. But Mr. Sadik lives close by. I feel your pain, I really do. And I think from our standpoint, we've shown everybody where we are in this project.
Thank you.
I want to wish you the best of luck. I'm going to give a couple of minutes for people that want to stay, people that want to leave. Don't wedge yourself at the door.
Make your motion, take a five-minute.
End our meeting if we could, please, after our short recess. And again, I'd like to thank South Coast Neighbors for that great presentation. It was very well done. Moving on to our taking action on things relative, business that has to be done in the town, plus some miscellaneous correspondence we're going to talk about. Next on our list is to approve, Chuck's not here, right?
No, not yet.
Okay. Sign the agreement for the use of the Lakeville Animal Shelter for 2016. Anybody got any comments about that?
I'll make a motion to approve with discussion, with a question.
Okay. I'll second your motion with a question. Have a motion made, seconded, go ahead.
Has Lisa looked this over?
Yes.
And she's all right with it?
She is.
Can we add her signature down the bottom at some point?
Sure.
Just so we know that she's looked it over and that she doesn't have any questions or anything, and that as the animal control officer, she kind of has a say in everything.
I think we have Lisa on there already.
Yeah.
Oh, that's true.
Not the animal. Although sometimes I wonder if I am the animal control officer.
Whoa. You know, select container. How's your throat? Huh? How's your throat? Sounds like somebody went for my throat therapy.
Cannibals, you.
I guess none of this, getting back to this, I guess none of it changed, it was standard fifty-dollar fee, so there's really nothing. So, we gonna have her name on here someplace?
Yeah, just so we know that she's looked it over, and she's okay with it, and it hasn't made any.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great idea, because if anything goes wrong, we blame her.
Right.
Perfect, perfect, that's a political settlement. I have a made, a motion made and seconded to approve our agreement for the animal shelter, with the caveat that Lisa signs the agreement also.
What Lisa?
Either Lisa.
Both Lises.
Both Lises, okay. Ms. Padalki. Going back to.
You're gonna call a motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's done.
You're already up.
You're already up, Chuck. First on our agenda, approve chapter ninety, final report to South Main Street, Rebecca Road, Dunham Road, Melbourne Road, as submitted by the esteemed, geez, don't put that on there, esteemed highway surveyor, Charles Macklem. I kick her a few bucks every time, she takes that agenda on. All right, who we got? We've got Rebecca Road, was approved for one hundred sixty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars, was completed for one sixty-eight seven eighty.
Make a motion to sign Rebecca Road in the amount of one sixty-eight and eighty.
Second.
Motion made and seconded as stated by Selectman Pacheco to approve the chapter, approve Rebecca Road project, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye. Downham Road, Downham Road was approved for sixty-nine thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, project was completed for sixty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Make a motion to approve in the amount of sixty-two nine seventy-nine for Downham Road.
The overage comes out of Chuck's galawats?
There's no overage, smart boy, it's all under.
Oh, it's under, oh, I just wanted to, he took his glasses off, and I was wondering if we'd really.
That's why I'm the highway surveyor, and you're a selectman.
There you go, I'll second it.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the work on Downham Road to the tune of sixty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, motion passes. Next, Chuck. Melbourne Road was approved for fifty-five thousand one hundred dollars, project was completed at forty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-four cents.
Make a motion to approve in the amount of forty-five three sixty-six eighty-four for Melbourne.
Second. I have a motion made and seconded to approve the funds of forty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-four cents for work done in Melbourne Road, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Last but not least, South Main Street, that section, Stop and Shop, contributions for that bit of the project, was approved for one oh eight three sixty, project was completed at one oh seven five twenty-two twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve the paved portion of South Main Street in the amount of one oh seven five twenty-two twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the paving of South Main Street for one oh seven five twenty-two, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have, do you know what's next?
For road projects?
Yeah, do you know what you wanna do?
No.
No.
We have no idea what we're getting for money, if we're getting. Doesn't look like we'll get any RAP money like we've been getting, but RAP is winter recovery money.
Yeah, I know.
Just 'cause we haven't had much of a winter, so, I don't think we're gonna see that sixty grand, so, hopefully, we'll get the normal four hundred, two thousand, and yeah.
Do you have spring projects? No.
No, not yet. There's a list of two or three roads I'd like to do, but I don't know if that four-hundred thousand cover any of them, so, let's see if we get a little closer, see how generous the governor is with our power of law.
Okay.
So, that's it? Almost quiet, yes. Speak, speak Wednesday, buddy, grasshopper.
Brown bag.
Yes, Wednesday. Billy had the van running today, so, I'll make sure, whatever, hopefully tomorrow night, whatever's supposed to happen, won't happen.
It's supposed to be rain, right?
Ten, one to two inches or something.
Really, yes.
So, hopefully.
Just when it's all gone.
Just, yes, we're getting there, but we're close, the season's almost over.
I know.
Maybe it sucks.
Can't complain, really.
We can always complain.
I can complain.
Be happy when you're a little.
You can complain.
I can complain.
He's not gonna complain anyhow, he's a joke. All right, thank you. Have a good night.
See you Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone here for public discussion, by the way?
Well, I'm just here to listen, but I also, some people are just complaining about some of the trash in town, and it's like, I'd be willing to come in.
Why don't you come up and introduce yourself, and so that we can get you a good shot of you on camera?
Yeah, oh, please. My name is Megan Corrigan, I live on Nine Beach Street, Arizona, I've lived here for, shoot, thirty-eight years, and my parents live on the same street as I do. Just concerned, I live on the Bay Shores as well, have most of my life, but just concerned, 'cause people are really talking about trash in the town.
I saw that.
And it's really, you can take pictures, and you're like, and I've gone to the town hall, and have said words about it, have done some complaints, and especially, you know, on seventy-nine, they're like, well, is it Mass Highway, or is it the town's responsibility? It really has gotten really bad in our town.
Looks like a trash talking room.
Yeah. You drive, even if you drive, as I was coming up here today, even as you buy, go by the state forest, there's coffee cups, and, like, even up by the highway, not to sound gross, but there's bottles of urine thrown out the window, coming off the highway, you know, coming off of twenty-four, or even, you know, where the truck drivers park for Irving, you know, for the gas station along that road, you look at it, and it is full of debris. And it's really embarrassing to come to our town and see how much trash is everywhere. I mean, I don't know if we should even talk about doing a citizens event, like a cleanup or something, I mean, I'd be willing to do something like that, but you're seeing it everywhere we go.
Yeah.
Even the garden signs, those recently got taken down, which is great, 'cause those garden signs used to line as you were going by twenty-four on South Main Street, I don't know if anyone else noticed them, I mean, that's extra debris we don't need.
I think with the snow being, one.
It was even before that, though.
Agree, but it's hard to take care of things like that in the, in the winter, so, I think that once you see spring, I know the Boy Scouts usually do a trash pickup day, as part of their things that they have to do to accomplish their medals, so, I know that they do that, I know that when the street sweepers go out, that'll take a lot of the debris off the roads as well, but I certainly think that.
It's not to the, but it's, I understand that it's done, but I've just seen it progress more and more each year, and I know people are trying, but it's, it's gotten pretty bad. 'Cause I'll walk Narrows Road, and you, even when they have to, they come and do the sweeping, it's still all on the side. You know, you have all the liquor bottles coming out of from, you know, Independence Harbor. I know someone who lives on Old Narrows Road, and people sit out there from Crystal Springs and drink fifth of vodka, fifth of peppermint shots, and just leave the bottles there. I mean, this is our town.
This is all up in one area.
Not just that area, I know on County Road, people are complaining about it, as you drive up Bullock Road, all, there's trash everywhere, and it's just not getting cleaned up. I know especially.
I've only heard the complaints from Sonoma Bay Shores, I've not heard any complaints from.
Have we been getting complaints until the town hall?
I haven't gotten complaints, I believe last year, you called me regarding.
I came in the other, I came in in December.
Yeah.
I didn't speak with you, I spoke with a, took the clerk.
I think last year, you called me regarding just the exit nine?
It wasn't me.
Well, someone called me regarding exit nine, and that's only controlled by Mass DOT, and I gave them the number of Mass DOT, but that's the only person I've ever spoken to, I don't know who you spoke to the other day.
Well, and also, I know, like, there's Facebook pages, I know you belong to one, one with Lisa, and I know, like, some people, someone just posted pictures of County Road, showing all the trash that's.
Don't you think people should, if they have, if they have a concern, instead of putting it on Facebook, call the town?
That's why I'm here today, 'cause I said, I put out there, is anyone gonna come to the meeting, because no one comes, and if you're concerned about your town, you should be coming in and addressing those issues.
Yeah, I mean, to do it on Facebook, I mean, to me, that's not the proper process. I mean, I don't go on Facebook. You do, do you? I don't wanna waste my time.
And well, it's a certain, it's not all over Facebook, it's on a page called Free Towners.
Well, they, if these people that are on this page called Free Towners, if they have some concerns, they should come into a board meeting and see us.
I'm not disagreeing with you, right.
So, we'll know about it, 'cause I live in East Free Town, I go through the town all the time, and sure, certainly, once in a while, you'll see stuff on the side of the road, but, I mean, this is the middle of winter, too.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
And I understand that part, but like, like today, even just seeing all the truck drivers and where they park, I mean, it's bad. You know, when you go down to Mass DOT, that's road down there.
Yeah, that's good, you're talking to Sonoma off of Main Street.
Yeah, it's on a, there's a lot of issues going on with a lot of that aspect, too. I just have one other question, I, I don't know if this is true, but I was under the impression that Stop and Shop was originally supposed to use exit eight, you know, innovation way to come in, was that the original plan? 'Cause I know the roads, how busy that area is going, where instead of using the highway, you know, the exit that was originally put in place, that originally for Stop and Shop, that was the case.
We can't force them to use that exit.
Okay. 'Cause doesn't it change the infrastructure of the road as well, 'cause of the weight, too?
The road is still all repaired, all the way up, the far roof.
So, we can.
Like Stop and Shop paid for the whole road repaired, in the widening, too.
The beginning part, though, I'm talking coming off of exit nine.
You're talking towards the mobile station and all over there. We can only guide them and ask them, and have their, their other truck drivers, the ones that are not part of Stop and Shop, we use that exit, we can't force it, we have no forcability, so, we do send.
'Cause it is great, once you leave Stop and Shop, that part is beautiful.
We do send reminders, you know, that especially, I know that there was a rollover just this past weekend, so, it may be who the board to make sure that we send a letter to Stop and Shop, saying, you know, remember that this exit was put in, and, you know, kindly use, you know.
You're talking innovation way.
Yeah, yeah, the exit eight, eight B, or whatever it is, but there was a rollover, and it wasn't pretty.
Just that, 'cause this concern, so concerns down in that part of.
But I think once you, once the spring starts rolling around, you see the Boy Scouts out doing things, and, you know, we can certainly put up on our signs, you know, please be considerate, there is a fine for littering, we can actually put that on the town signs, and I think that that would just be a gentle reminder, remember, this, I'm not sure the people that are littering really live in town, so.
I believe we don't. Move on to County Road.
I'll show you. Stop and Shop does do a cleanup every year, too, they organize their own cleanup. I think it's after the winter, and it does, in the spring, yeah.
It's just, you know, you just see the, our town really deteriorating, we lost Kathy, and that building went down, and then the building sits empty, and you see some other buildings sitting empty in the four corners, that weren't always that way either. I mean, this used to, I mean, remember Max movies, remember what we used to have, and we don't have any of that anymore. It's really a shame to see buildings sitting empty, you know, where we had Sedells, we had all different things in our town, and to see, like, you go over to Lakeville, and there's so much going on, the building plazas, not that I want all that, but you see growth, and you don't see the growth happening here, that's how it feels.
You don't see the small-town growth, but there is certainly growth, and this board has been really good about trying to get good, clean business in town, certainly the mom and pops, we would love to have those back here, but there are some, there are some issues with that, we don't have a sewer line, that's one of the things that we've been working on, that this board wants to do, because a lot of, the reason why that Kathy's came down, and there was gonna be another building there, is that they were gonna put, had to put a septic system in, it was very costly, you didn't have the funding for that available right away, but, you know, this board, or whatever board comes next, sewer line is a very, a very important part of our discussion, because I think that once you see the sewer line, you'll see small businesses, they just can't afford it right now. So, that, that's one of the, one of the problems, you know, with the small businesses over there, we have, we have an issue with that.
Yeah, it's just sad.
I know.
It's really sad to see.
We're trying.
Well, thank you for listening.
Oh, anytime, that's what we're here for.
Commercial tax base is expanding, we've attracted clean business to the town.
Thank you.
The mother pop shops that make it clean, we did have a park put in.
Yeah, the park is great.
And to, you know, get people out of route, attract things, and.
People are using the park in the four corners, I take my daughter there, I have a four-year-old who go there, people are using.
Okay, you have a good time?
Yep, it's wonderful, and that's great to have, and that is a nice change.
Yeah, it would be nice to keep them small shops.
Just, and also, like, even, like, I don't know if there's, like, a group to say, this is maybe a citizen group, like they're doing for the pipeline, to say, let's beautify some of it, you know, that's something that definitely, that'd be a nice thing to do for our town. I mean, my mother was the original carol maker for this, you know, when we used to have at the four corners, when they had the gazebo, and they got stolen, my mother made them, you know what I mean, so, I'm just talking about, I remember good things that we did have.
Yeah.
Just unfortunate.
I know. But, we still have the Strawberry Festival, we're giving some extra money to the Cultural Council this year, so, Christmas can have more lights, and try to beautify the, the area over there a little bit more, I mean, they're limited, they have five hundred dollars, most of the supplies that they buy, they come out of their pockets, and then she of the board said, no, we wanna give them more money to be able to do things.
Can I ask one other question, for our webpage for our town? The updating and stuff, is it an older system that's used for our webpage?
I wouldn't have the answer to that.
Okay.
You do why?
What do you mean, as far as updating, like, what are you looking for?
Like, like, you know, like even to, I had a really search to see about the town meeting today, you know what I mean, you would just search.
Well, right on the left-hand side, it says meetings and agendas, you just click that, it's right on the left-hand side, and that will show you all the meetings and agendas.
And then for one point, it said it was not, it was under construction for a moment. It's just saying like.
It shouldn't say that, but if you go right, if you go on the left-hand side, it should say subscribe, and then you would, you can subscribe to anything that you want, any meetings and agendas, and then it will always give you any, any updates for any meetings, upcoming meetings.
Okay, 'cause I'm just, the reason why I'm asking, is I've gone to other towns, and like, there says, today, tonight, five days, meeting, town hall, all week, you know, like, it's just trying to get, like, you know, you have to search for it, more than it's just available.
Well, we don't have any calendar, if you're looking for, like, a type of calendar, we don't have a calendar, but if you go to subscribe, it'll always update you, as soon as the town clerk puts an, puts an actual meeting notice up there, it'll actually update you, as long as you subscribe to that, like Board of Selectmen, or our planning board, zoning board, it'll automatically.
That's just kind of outdated, in the sense of how, like.
Well, we don't have a, an IT person that's on, I'm gonna go with that.
That's all to say.
See, that's, that's one of the issues, we don't have an IT person, so, each, each department has to.
Make do with what they have.
They have to make do with what they have. The same thing with, you know, some places have big crews in the highway department to go along, and, you know, when they got nothing to do, go pick up the trash on the road, we've got five guys.
No, I understand that part.
You know, and when you're talking about businesses, small businesses, like Sedells and places like that, I mean, we have no control on somebody that wants to close, or somebody comes in and they can't make it, you know, it's tough, it's tough, I mean, I remember when, you could get rent movies across the street from the town hall, but they closed down.
Because now there's Netflix.
Now there's Netflix.
Yeah, exactly.
And now there's streaming, everything changes. The cookbook, the guy sells cookbooks out of there, out of where Mac and Muffin was.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I miss, I miss going to that store and getting candy with the kids, and picking out a movie, and coming home on a Friday night, but it's, it's a different, it's different.
But, you know, what I mentioned before, is that, you know, people get on Facebook, But you know, I, what I mentioned before is that, you know, people get on Facebook, that's fine. But if they've got concerns, they should be coming here and saying, hey, maybe we could get some of these people to lend a hand.
I agree. I agree, because that's what we need.
Even if they can't come here, they can go to the town hall. Leave a note at the selectman's office or speak to Ally. I mean, there's, there's other venues than having to come to this meeting because we everybody's busy.
And maybe through the board, sorry, Lee, I didn't mean to, maybe through the Board of Health once spring breaks, we can have a town cleanup day. So, I mean, that's something that we can talk about with the, with the Board of Health.
Yeah, I, I would-
And we're gonna put you in charge.
Hey, I have no problem with that.
All right. I like that idea. There's nothing wrong with that. A town cleanup day, I like it.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Listen, I, I appreciate your concern. I really do.
I do too.
And I'm, I'm glad people are coming forward telling me because I'm the chairman of the board. I didn't know that. Nobody, nobody left a message. This is slight and somebody's called me and said, there's trash along the highway. I just, I, along the roads. I haven't heard. And I live in Free Town also. And if I would've saw that on, on the roads in Free Town, the roads that I travel on, I probably would've been more concerned about what's going on, but I'm just not. So uh, that gives, because I just, these roads that I don't normally travel on. We do from time to time, drive around just to make sure we're, I know what's going on in town, just, just to stay aware of things. But I haven't this winter, you know? Anyway, thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Watch yourself on television. You could be a superstar in town.
No, okay.
Okay, can we move on?
That's fine. I'm, I'm okay with that. I can be harassed.
Just put that under old business, town cleanup.
Hang around and, yeah.
My sister's on TV for town all the time, so.
There you go. There you go. Okay, if you really wanna get involved, really wanna get involved, we have an opening on the finance committee. Seriously, because we haven't been able to fill that opening. Now, it's an unpaid job. Here's the chairman of the finance committee. There's a member of the finance committee. And they volunteer their time. This is the busy time of the year because this is when we go through our budget process. And then it kinda lets off until maybe towards the end of the calendar. But if you're interested- That way you know where your money's going.
Yeah.
Because we have a say in it.
And we do have one of the lower tax break, tax areas too. And I understand that's why you have five people. I understand those parks too where other towns are paying a lot more than we do for taxes too.
But if you're interested in the finance committee, all you have to do is send an email to Ally. She'll put it on our agenda. And guess what? You'll be coming to finance committee. I mean, serious, I'm being serious because it's so hard to get people to do.
Anything.
There you go.
Hey, I was a union rep for eight years and saving people's jobs. I know all of them. I can follow them.
Okay. All right, thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm on my way.
Thank you.
And next we have on our agenda to approve the senior work program participants. Who would be Mary Yamet, Michael Cascany, Diane Scott, and Fernando Tavargas.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve the four above named mentioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, done. Approve the abatements for the month of January two sixteen.
I make a motion to approve in the amount of thirty-nine, seven fifteen, thirty-three.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve the abatements to the tune of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and change for the month of January submitted by Chief Sylvia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve slash the signing of the Patriot Half Triathlon from Sun Multisport Events for June eighteen, two thousand and sixteen for Route one oh five and Route eighteen. Also approve the donation, also approve a donation from Sun Force, Sun Multisport to the town.
Um, I'm gonna do this all together. I'll make a motion to approve the Sun Multisport for six eighteen, the Cranberry Tri-Fest for eight twenty and eight twenty-one, and the Turd Cramp for five twenty-two. Um, these are all viewed by both the police chief and the fire chief and they've been approved by both.
Second. All right, I have a motion made and seconded and stated by Selectman Pacheco. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'm gonna make a motion to accept the five hundred dollar um donation to the town of Free Town from the Sun Multisport with a very thank you. Um, it was sent to us in appreciation, but really it's, we're appreciated um very much back to them. So I'll make a motion to approve the five hundred dollars.
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to approve the donation of five hundred dollars from Sun Multisports to the town, which we greatly appreciate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that's it. Board of Health will discuss the building committee. Last on the list.
I think, well, I don't know if the guys think, but I think it's crazy busy right now. I think we need a meeting, but I don't know when you wanna have that.
On what? The building committee?
Yeah.
The reason I asked to have this put on is uh, in all honesty, after what we've gone through this winter with the police station and so forth, I would like to see the uh a committee, a building committee formed for the sake of developing plans to build a new police station. And not destroy the one that we have. The one that we have could certainly be used for either, uh, in my estimation, could be used for uh Board of Health, uh Building Department, and probably sewer and water is sufficient size. We put a lot of money into that building. Um, things are just about getting up to pot. But it's just way too small for a police department. So that's what I would like to see happen.
When do you wanna convene a meeting?
Whenever you guys want.
I hate to say this, but it was your idea.
My idea?
Throw a date.
Well-
I agree with you, Paul. Well, I'll be on, on record saying I agree. I think that's a great plan and it certainly will evade some of the crowded areas we have in the town hall right now, which could be used, expanded on. And uh, but uh, when's, when's a good time? You must've thought through this already.
Well, I didn't think through as far as when is a good time because we're pretty busy coming up, but-
Yeah, I, that's what I said.
Do you want, let, let me ask you a question. Do you wanna be involved in it?
Well, you're not-
Uh-oh.
Well, you're gonna either have, well-
I mean, if you're not, if you don't wanna be involved, we could wait a month, another month.
I think that would probably behoove you because I'm only gonna be here and select one, then whoever uh-
I think we should wait till May.
May? Can we at least have a preliminary meeting in April?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so at the-
After the election.
After the election, we'll sit down. Ally, we can put it on the agenda, right, for, we'll come up with a date for a meeting, get the building committee to talk a lot of, and we got representatives from the police department on the building committee too, if I remember right.
Yes. Send us, um, everybody that's on the building committee. So we'll have our first, we'll have our get-together in April and then we can kick it off in May. Because the budgets and our first town meeting.
Got it.
Okay. Board of Health, anything, Paul?
I wish you guys would get rid of your coals.
Me too.
So nonetheless, we do.
Nothing out of Board of Health, uh Personnel Board, just chairman.
Yes, ah.
Ooh, boy.
Yeah, right. Okay, I, uh, I have a motion to have a change of status for Thomas E. Ashley.
So moved. We already took the action. We just have to-
He's hired highway department truck driver.
We just haven't uh approved the change of status.
Right. I have a motion.
Have a motion made and seconded?
No, 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 Paul. I, he needs the motion.
Oh, he smokes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Look who's here.
Hi, Dad.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
You good, Paul?
Good.
Yeah, she, that's my driver, Diane.
I'm just about ready to wrap it up. All right, um, I received a notification from the following residents that they want to become full workers. Edward Alowski, Rhonda Perowski, and Melanie Paris. Do you have a motion to approve?
Do I make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Um, I need a motion to approve the change of status form for Stephen Chandler and Timothy McIntosh. That's submitted by the town administrator.
Second.
Can I make that motion? Paul, second, sir?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I need a, to reaffirm the change of status form for Stephen Chandler submitted by the water department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, change of status forms for Patrick Lee and Thomas, long as patrol officers from Reserve to Patrol, after having successfully completed the police academy in all other conditions, step four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Um, do you have a motion to approve and change, uh, assign the change of status form for John High Junior for a van driver estimated by Baba Lepore in the amount of twelve thirteen?
Twelve thirteen for thirteen sixty-one, right?
Yes.
Yes, that's a, for lack of assurance, I make that motion?
Say, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, do you have a motion to approve George Brunwell to serve on the finance committee?
Can I make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and Linda Fornia to the library planning committee?
Can I make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the last thing I have is, this is not, oh, no, I have two things. Um, do you have a motion to accept Mike Lirillo's letter of resignation? Um, we received this in our office. It is with deep sadness that due to medical conditions beyond my control, I must resign all my positions, both elected and appointed by the town of Free Town. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the town of Free Town. Do you have a motion to approve, to accept?
I make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we please send him a letter of um thanks? And uh, for all he's done on, on actually everything he's served on, especially the water. Um, he's a, a wealth of knowledge and um has guided the water department into where they are right now. And I don't think they would be in the position they are without him.
He's done a great, great job and it's worth regret that we accept his resignation.
Um, do you have a motion to sign the MOA for the highway clerk or the library union?
Can I make that motion?
Second.
Okay, we need all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And last but not least, uh, change of sign, uh, approve and sign the change of status form for Jessica Thomas is submitted by the interim treasurer collector.
Make that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the reason is she's going from assistant treasurer step two to assistant treasurer collector step two in the amount of ninety-one. Okay.
Done, huh?
Done. Just like that.
Moving on to new business, we have the dates for the upcoming Board of Selectmen's meetings. Tentatively March the seventh, March the twenty-first, Tuesday, April the fifth, Tuesday, April the nineteenth, May the second, May the sixteenth, and Tuesday, May the thirty-third.
Just requesting one more time that Tuesday, April fifth, have nothing on the agenda and just have to be a work meeting.
Did you hear that, Ally?
Yes.
Any other new business?
No, just, do you have the cars, just, um-
Miss Lea's correspondence, uh, we don't-
Yes, that's, that was just-
Have you brought that, Paul, to just speak to me?
I have one.
Go ahead.
No, fine.
This is uh coming up Thursday. This is, and unfortunately, we couldn't read this earlier because we had a canceled meeting, but um, last time we were supposed to read this. This is from the Free Town, uh, to the Free Town seniors. Please join us. Uh, this is gonna happen Thursday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen at eleven AM. For a free luncheon with the Bristol County District Attorney, Thomas M. Quinn the Third. We're gonna talk to elders about elder abuse prevention. Uh, this is proudly being sponsored by the Free Town Police Association. This free luncheon will feature Bristol County District Attorney, Thomas M. Quinn the Third, who has an important message for all seniors in our community. Registration for this uh event um can be done at the Free Town Police Association website, wwwfreetownpoliceassociation.org. Or to call the police station at five oh eight seven six three four oh one seven. Um, the seating is limited and the event is gonna occur this coming Thursday. It's unfortunate that we had a canceled meeting, couldn't read this earlier, but I think anybody that's interested, give the police station a call. Again, it's um five oh eight seven six three four oh one seven. That's the business line. Okay, that's it, that's what I have.
The other Miss Lea's correspondence we got is from EverSource and they're, they've sent us a letter going forward. It's that EverSource Energy in Eastern Mass intends to selectively apply herbicides in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and sixteen around the power line right of ways that pass through your municipality. Photoc treatments will take place between June first and October sixteenth along with cut surface treatments. The uh fall cut surface treatment, basal treatments or sensitive phototreatments may be necessary in areas subdued between Oc- October the third, scheduled, pardon me, between October the third and December the thirty-first. In areas along the ROWs that might not have received a phototreatment for trees, uh, under trees over twelve feet tall. The exact time is dependent upon weather conditions and field bruise processes. And that's it for municipal correspondence. That's it for the personnel board. That's it for new business, uh, old business, water agreement. Anything we need to talk to in open session about that?
No, not open.
Uh, anything on the, uh, old business and you work out a new language for your personal bylaw?
No.
Well, we gotta work with the attorney again, in mind.
Pick that one up.
Ally, what's my reason for going into executive session?
Painting, um,
How about you?
To meet with the water department and discuss strategy with respect to possible litigation with the city of Fall River and if a meeting, open meeting may have detrimental effect, do you agree?
During the bottom of the-
I just have a question. Um, the library painting is moving along, correct? Sorry, and um- Not library, you mean town hall?
I mean, new town hall painting, sorry.
Town hall, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. Um, and I, we have been in touch with the historical commission.
I'll have to ask.
Okay, that's, that's important.
The letter went out though, right?
Yes, it's in the bottom, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move into executive session for the part for the reason of uh contract negotiations and if it was an open meeting, it may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. So I'll make move into executive session. Make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, not to return an open session with respect to possible litigation with the city of Fall River.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded. We move into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Sadik?
Yes.
Mr. Chico?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, Gerger, yes.